It's now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we please stand and you can join me in the pledge of allegiance? Please put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time Clerk Magallanes will administer the oath to our newly appointed Commissioner Ms. Jones. Yes, sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for indulging me and providing me the opportunity to just say a brief, offer some brief remarks in support of my appointee to the Planning Commission. It is an honor, I believe, can't say with certainty, but I believe this is a historic moment tonight. I believe Ms. Jones is the first African-American woman to be appointed and to serve on the City of Palmdale's Planning Commission. So it truly is an honor to be here tonight to support her. It's a remarkable accomplishment. She's earned it by all means. Ms. Jones has a tremendous wealth of experience in housing. She's worked with victims of domestic violence. She's worked with the unhoused. She's got a wealth of resources and connections. She has a second life in the entertainment world. So she brings an entirely new perspective, which I think will add a significant value to your dialogue here. She also supports the city's vision in terms of supportive housing. She's aware, well aware of the Knights Inn project that is being proposed and was just recently funded by the state and Antelope Valley is going to look forward with that project. She's also supportive of the event and the housing facility that we just broke around on yesterday, the Together California Village in Council District Five, which is going to provide housing for foster youth, keeping families together, keeping siblings together, which is a remarkable, it's a model for the country, quite frankly. So anyhow, I just wanted to say I'm so proud to have Ms. Jones take the oath of office tonight and serve on the Planning Commission on behalf of Council District Five. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
We're looking forward to having Ms. Jones serve with us. She will find it's a very warm and friendly place. The Planning Commission. So there's never any controversy over here. Well, knock on wood. Okay, so Ms. Magallanes, you have the oath to read?
Okay, so Ms. Jones, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please. Have a copy of the oath, so we will read it together. I'll go ahead and have you read into that. So you will repeat after me.
Okay.
I.
I, Ayesha Jones.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do swallow, swallily, solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely without.
Freely without.
Any mental reservation.
Any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I.
And that I.
Will well.
Will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge the du.
The duties.
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Okay, so I'll have you sign the official certificate shortly.
Awesome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Am I allowed to have words?
Welcome Commissioner Jones. Would you like us all, before we do roll call, we can all, we can all.
Okay, can I have words?
Pictures?
Pictures.
Take your place amongst us.
Yes.
Or pictures with us. Welcome. Okay, now Clerk Magallanes, can you please do roll call?
Chair Henderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Elise.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Luhan.
Here.
And Olivares, absent. We have a quorum.
Great. Clerk Magallanes, can you please read the Public Comment Code of Conduct?
Okay, we have the Public Code of Conduct. Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of this body is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's meeting and this meeting body encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the body must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of this body's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speak. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on the agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General, public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the body. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with the members of this body or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the members of this body, staff, or any other person. Members of this audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and members of this body and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from this meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item five on the agenda, public comments. Now's the time for public comments. If you wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda or items that are on the consent calendar, each of you is allotted two minutes to speak. And Clerk Magallanes, do you have any speaker cards at this time?
I do not.
Okay, very good. Okay, so it brings us to item number six, which is Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar will be enacted in one motion unless any items are polled by commissioners, at which time items will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately following this portion of the agenda. We have two items on the Consent Calendar. Item six A is waiver of the full readings of resolutions to be considered and voted on in this meeting. This allows for the reading of title only in lieu of reciting the entire text. And six B is approval of the minutes from the previous Planning Commission meetings of December fourteen, twenty twenty-three and January eleven, twenty twenty-four. Commissioners, would you like to pull any items from the consent calendar? Or would you like to make a motion and a second to accept the consent calendar?
I'll make motion, set the calendar.
Okay, I have a motion or I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Elise and a second from Commissioner Luhan. Please show your vote. Uh-oh. Oh, technical difficulties. Where's IT?
So we had a motion from Elise.
And a second from Luhan. We got so excited, we forgot to log her in. And then we also forgot to tell her how to use the computer. Those are kind of important things. Yep. Okay, did you get the crash course? Do we need to revoke? We need to revoke? Okay, so I need to back up. Okay, Commissioners, can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar? Oh, we already went past that, right? We're just devoting.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, you may be.
Please show your vote. Oh.
Alex, at this time, could we go to a voice vote?
Yeah, let's just go to a voice vote.
Is it now working? You can do a voice vote.
Yeah, we can do a voice vote. If the system.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair Elise and a second from Commissioner Luhan. Please voice your vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, let the record show, motion passes with four yes votes and one absent. Okay, that moves us to item seven, the public hearings. Commissioners, are there any disclosures or conflicts of interest on any of the public hearing items on the agenda that you would like to declare at this moment? Okay, very good. Okay, Clerk Magallanes, can you please read us the item and title for the record?
Item seven A, Adopt Resolution Number PC twenty twenty-three dash zero two six, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the plant, oh, sorry, of the City of Palmdale, approving conditional use permit seventeen dash zero one two, major modification number one, and site plan review twenty-two dash zero one nine, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project.
Thank you, Ms. Magallanes. Do we have Assistant Planner Sam Dominguez here today? There he is. Come on up and present your item number seven A.
Good evening, planning commissioners. The project before you is for CUP seventeen dash zero one two, major modification number one, and site plan review twenty-two dash zero one nine for Quikrete Companies of Southern California LLC. Tonight, you received a memorandum for the revisions, for five revisions to the conditions of approval for the project that were agreed upon by the applicant. Condition twenty-four point four will be removed and conditions thirty-seven point one, eighty-eight, ninety-three, and ninety-four have been revised to provide more flexibility for the applicant. The applicant is requesting approval of major modification, application to a previously approved CUP seventeen dash zero one two and approval of SPR twenty-two dash zero one nine to modify a previously entitled paper manufacturing facility. This approval will expand the operations of the facility by ten acres for a total of thirty acres. The project is located south of East Palmdale Boulevard and east of Seventy-Fifth Street East. The total building area for the proposed project is approximately a hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet and will be constructed in two phases. Phase one will include quick rate production and that will include the production facility, coverage storage, and an office building. Phase two will be occupied by pavement. And it will, those will be two buildings, one for the production and the other for manufacturing. Axis will be provided along East Palmdale Boulevard. This rendering shows two elevations for the pavement facility, which will consist of ribbed wall metal panels and decorative translucent panels. These renderings show two elevations for the quick rate production and two for the office building. The facility is your typical steel industrial construction with some added architectural elements, such as aluminum framing with ribbed metal walls. And the proposed office building is a combination, a combination of ribbed metal wall with smooth finished plaster. Therefore, Stafford recommends the Planning Commission adopt item seven A as amended and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. We'll open the public hearing at this point. Is the applicant here to speak on the project?
I believe so.
I'm ready to represent the applicant.
Okay, if you have anything you want to speak about, then you can. If not, you don't have to.
Yeah, other than the, Sam already mentioned that the applicant is in agreement with the changes to the conditions which were presented to you tonight.
Okay.
Is, is in agreement.
Okay, so do any of the commissioners have any questions that they'd like to ask to the representative for the applicant? Or are you guys ready to close the public hearing?
I have a question. What is the build-out time for this particular project?
I'll have the applicant come and answer that.
My name is Barry Muns with Antelope Valley Engineering here representing the applicant Quikrete tonight. The approximate timeline for build-out is approximately fifteen to eighteen months, once they're under construction for the bagging plant. The pavement product, which is making the prefabricated pavers, is approximately the same timeframe, but that's in a second phase. So really, if you put the two together, it would be approximately three years for the build-out of the facility. Once they really start construction, we have some hurdles to get through with the fish and wildlife before we can start construction. So there's, there's going to be some time before it actually gets started.
The reason why I ask that because, you know, it's all on Palmdale Boulevard, so it's one, one way in, one way out. So I wonder if there's going to be any, causing congestion with traffic.
There is a traffic signal proposed as part of the project at the driveway. And that was something that the city traffic engineer had requested and we went through a traffic impact analysis focused on the access in and out of that site. And it was determined that a signal would be the best, the best way to go about that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I guess we will close the public hearing on this. Commissioners, do you have any discussion on the matter? No? If not, commissioners, can I have a motion and a second for item seven A?
Item seven A as amended.
As amended.
A motion to approve item seven A as amended.
Okay, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Luhan, a second from Vice Chair Elise. Please show your vote. Is our computer working over here? Let's give it a shot.
Is that working?
Well, ours, mine's not working. Oh, mine's working, okay.
It didn't show up.
Or, or the other one. Our technology has some delay. Oh, it works, whoopee! Okay, let the record show, item passes with four yes votes and one absence. Okay, that brings us to, did you notice there's no item eight on the agenda? I forgot to mention that. We jumped from seven to nine. Oh, where is it? Oh, eight A, okay, it wasn't on mine. All right, eight A. Hello. Hello, good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Congratulations, Ms. Jones, on your appointment. And good evening, Councilmember Alarco as well. Give me a second, I think that's Max, right? My name's George Davis. I'm the Public Art Program Manager. I'm going to give a little introduction to the Public Art Program and one of the requirements of our Public Art Commission bylaws. The Public Art Commission consists of seven members with professional credentials and work experiences, exhibiting and performing artists, in the visual and media arts, contemporary museum and gallery art curators, directors, arts management professionals, professionals, arts educators, design professionals, such as architects, landscape architects, and urban planners. At least two of the seven voting members shall be professional artists, at least two of the seven shall be design professionals, and at least one shall be a member of the Planning Commission, which is why I'm here. So the Public Art Commission has a similar role as the Planning Commission in the aspect that they review and approve projects for our community, which shape how our community develops. Public art helps shape public spaces, harnessing the ideas and assets of the people who use it. This is formerly known as placemaking. Our previous commissioners, planning commissioners to serve on the Public Art Commission have been involved with the following administrative procedures in public art projects. The adoption of the Public Art Commission bylaws, municipal, sorry, excuse me, municipal public art guidelines, the mural policy and guidelines, public art guidelines for developers, temporary artwork policy, the deaccession of artwork policy, and recommendation to City Council of FY twenty-two, twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, five-year public artwork plans. And we are currently in the process of finalizing the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year public artwork plan, which will determine the projects that we do next fiscal year in the City of Palmdale. Completed public art projects include the kinetic sculpture at Rancho Vista Park, Antelope Valley Walls in coordination with City of Lancaster, where we had four murals painted in September of twenty twenty-two, the Revolution Sculpture at the Palmdale Auto Mall, the Palmdale Planer Murals, which are here at the Palmdale City Library, and temporary artwork installations and displays at kaleidoscopes for two years. Approved projects to be completed include Antelopes on Parade, which is another collaboration with the City of Lancaster, the Small Mural Mentor Program, where three mentors will work with mentees to design and paint three small murals on Ten Street East, and the Palmdale Playhouse Historical Narrative Mural, which will feature a mural on the facade of the playhouse, which is a hundred fifty-two feet wide. Proposed public art projects to be included on the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five public art work plan include public art elements at Samuel and Park, which include a sculpture, ceramic tile components to be placed on the breezeway of the buildings in collaboration with two local schools, and community engagement around the sculpture and gathering plaza, an entertainment theme mural for the Palmdale Amphitheater, a sculpture for the roundabout, the upcoming, the upcoming roundabout at Avenue S eight and Fortieth Street East, which is right next to Dry Town, another iteration of Antelope Valley Walls, and we'll again paint additional four murals in the City of Palmdale. And again, that's a collaboration with the City of Lancaster, and temporary artwork at the Kaleidoscope Art and Music Festival. So we're building this program, we're creating a lot of artwork in the streets of Palmdale and engaging the community for that. So we hope one of you will consider joining us. Our meetings are held on the fourth Tuesday of every other month at five thirty. Our next meeting is on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And I believe that's all I have. You have any questions for me? Is this, this is just a Palmdale Art Commission, correct? This is the, for the City of Palmdale Art Commission. But you're, did you say that there was murals in Lancaster City Park? We've collaborated with the City of Lancaster on a couple of initiatives. One of them is Antelopes on Parade, which was started initially in the City of Lancaster. Let's see, I want to say about fourteen years ago was their first iteration of that. So when we, when we were exploring that option, we contacted them and we both did our initiative separately, but we combined it in terms of marketing and in terms of recruitment for artists of the region. And the other initiative is now called Antelope Valley Walls. It was previously known as Pow Wow AV. That's an initiative that came out of Hawaii and is worldwide. Lancaster has been doing that for several years now. It's every other year. So in twenty twenty-two, they invited us to participate, which we did. It's, so our, our portion of that included the management of the four murals in Palmdale, but at the same time, several other murals were being created in Lancaster. And it's the same thing that's going to happen in September of this year. They'll produce a number of murals and will produce a number of murals as well. I think one of the differences is we're, we're, our attempt is mostly to engage local artists in the area as opposed to Lancaster, which brings in artists from around the country and sometimes around the world. So does the City of Lancaster have a similar commission, art commission, just like Palmdale does? Excuse me, I don't believe they have a public art commission as of yet. They're in the process of developing a public art master plan and with that would come a public art commission. So when we put artwork in Lancaster, do they pay for it or we pay for it? We don't put artwork in Lancaster. We collaborate on those initiatives. We pay only for artwork within the City of Palmdale. Lancaster pays for their own initiatives. We just, we just like to, you know, have good art initiatives that are collaborative so that we can potentially share resources. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Davis?
Yes, I have a question. You touched on part of it. I was going to ask you. I noticed how you said you had two professional artists on the board as well as two design artists. How often or is there a set a number of artists that you reach out to the public with? How often or i- is there a set a number of artists that you reach out to the public with um for these projects?
So there's, for the commission, there's a recruitment initiative that, that happens through the city clerk's office. Uh, the term of the appointment is three years. We're coming up on the end of the first term. Um, so the, the current commissioners will either be reappointed or have to reapply. I'm not sure how that works with the city clerks. Um, for, for artist selection, uh, that's a totally different thing. We, we put together an artist selection panel and we, who, that reviews applicants for any given project, uh scores the applications, uh and then we interview artists and select that way. But so the Public Art Commission oversees that process and um reviews the recommendations of the artist selection committee for each project, and then they'll go ahead and approve that. And, and part of that process as well is to obviously keep uh the city manager and city council involved, and, and we, we do that. We do that directly through the city manager's office.
Got it, okay.
So you say the meetings are the fourth Tuesday of every month at what time?
Of every other month at five, at five thirty. So it's six meetings a year, low commitment, fun, art, good times.
Sell it.
Refreshments?
Uh, water, free water.
There you go, okay. Um, do any of the commissioners have an interest in um being on the art commission?
Actually do.
Oh, all right, you're jumping in.
Oh, that'd be fantastic.
Way to go.
There's actually two very good local artists in here tonight, um, that do a lot of work in the city. Um, and I get their invites all the time right here. Um, my brother's also a graphic designer. He did that for the military. Um, and I dabble and dabble sometimes, so I love art, music, all those things, and I'm actually highly interested.
That's fantastic. I'd, I'd love to get uh um with you at some point after the meeting and get some of that information from you.
Sounds wonderful.
Awesome.
Okay, so um now then if we, anybody else? Questions? Um, so at this time, would we move to a point or would we uh send it back to staff for further communication?
So what we can do at this time is we can move to item nine, and if there is any appointment that wants to be made tonight, that's okay. If not, we can continue it to the next meeting.
Ah, gosh, I thought we were already on nine.
Eight and nine kinda go together.
Okay, on to item nine.
All right, thank you.
Um, do uh, I'll say it again, do any commissioners have interest in the appointment? So what do we make a motion or how do we do this?
Uh, so are you ready to make the commitment or do you want? Okay. So then we have a new appointed commissioner to the art.
So let it be done. Okay, congratulations. And, all right, then we're off to staff communications. Do we have any updates for the commission from staff?
We do. First and foremost, we welcome our newest commissioner. This is the first time in a very long time that we now have a full commission, so thank you. Um, also, in the past couple of weeks, the city of Palmdale's been pretty active. As you've heard, uh Trader Joe's has broken ground, uh so you probably saw some movement on that. That's very exciting. And then we also had a groundbreaking for the transitional housing that you guys approved back here in December of last year. So we have a lot of exciting things.
When um these projects break ground and they're ready to uh have a ribbon cutting, can the commission get notification of that?
Absolutely. We'll make sure that that's on there.
All right. Okay, so that was um staff communications, planning commission communications. Do any of the commissioners have any updates to report? Nope, okay.
Uh, I believe that Ayesha Jones did wanna say a few words, so this would be the time to do it.
See, speak up.
I was trying. Um, I, I wanted to speak up when uh Ms. uh Councilwoman Andrea had spoke and announced that I was the first African-American uh woman on the planning commissioner team. I did not know that, um. But as she came, it was, you know, it kinda touched my heart because my mother, it is Black History Month, for those who don't know. I'm born and raised in this town. Um, I feel my parents are historical people. They both have passed, and all day today, I've just been feeling them smile, and I wanted to just share a second for Black History Month, if that's okay?
Sure.
So my parents both came here in nineteen seventy. They both worked at Lockheed. That's how I was born out here. They met at work. Um, my dad was the flight uh shift supervisor, so all the planes that you see flying from Lockheed, my dad was the one who supervised those planes um up until the day that he had um a hypertension heart attack and passed, so he was still working there at the time. My mother also worked there. She ended up leaving earlier than my father, but my mother um marched with Martin Luther King. She was from Birmingham, and every year uh for Black History Month and for Martin Luther King's birthday, my mom would speak at several events out here in the Antelope Valley, um at the Performance Arts Centers, at my schools, Juniper Highland, um and wherever else they invited her to speak. So I feel very honored to be the first black woman, um and just be here, period, with you guys. I honestly didn't know what I was signing up for, but I'm um kind of spiritual, so I just go with it, and I'm thankful to be here, and I hope to be an asset um along with the team. Um, so I just wanted to share those things, and I just wanted to thank Andrea one more time for the opportunity. Um, and I'm glad to, to bring what I have to offer and learn what I came to learn and share together as a team. So thank you guys for the moment.
Okay, we're very happy to have you and looking forward to um serving with you. Like I said, this is a very warm and fuzzy um place to be.
Yes.
Everybody gets lung beautifully over here, so uh you're gonna have a good time. Okay, so then I'll move to adjourn.
Chair Henderson, before we move on, um, do we need to vote on the appointment of the public art commissioner?
I think that we should.
Yes, too, because it was ki- it was kind of like acquiescence by silence, and let's just, let's just make it clear.
I was wondering about that.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a, can I get a motion to appoint Commissioner um Jones?
Ayesha Jones, to the Public Art Commission, a first and a second?
I will gladly take the first motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I've got a motion from Vice Chair Elise, a second from Chair Luhon. Please show your vote. Ooh, it's even on here.
Do I still vote?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Vote myself, yourself? Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for adjournment yet? All right, okay.
We are.
I move to adjourn the planning commission, meeting of Thursday, Mar- oh, to, to the meeting of Thursday, March fourteenth at
That's the next meeting.
At seven PM.